Very good. Thank you, and let me call to order this regular meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, September the 15th. I'll start with an apology to those we say we were going to start at six o'clock meeting, and here it is almost quarter to seven. So if you're just tuning in, we just had an executive session that went a little bit longer than we had anticipated in a full agenda pre-commission. But here we are officially now called to order for the regular commission meeting, and I can't think of a better way to start than with an invocation. And we've asked Rabbi Schlesinger if he would lead us in an invocation. Rabbi Schlesinger, let me call on you at this point, sir, to give us our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our God and Creator, we come together to attend to the business of this county and its constituents. And we thank you for your many blessings, for life and health, for work and rest, for home and love and friendship. In a world that's so often seems torn by violence and pain, our world that seems far from wholeness, in a world waiting still to be redeemed, we ask that your blessing of peace rest upon the inhabitants of all lands so that belief in you will continue to spread its many blessings among us, exalting us all in righteousness. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi Schlesinger. Next item on our agenda, approval of the minutes. The minutes of our pre-commission meeting of September the first and our regular commission meeting of September the first have been prepared and distributed of any changes or corrections that we need to make. If not, can I get a motion? Got a motion by Allen and second by Schlesinger. Approve the minutes, all in favor of approval of both sets of minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda, our reports from our committees. And first is Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met last on August 25th and took the following actions. We approved a supplemental budget appropriations for the Board of Elections in the amount of $259,264 for the 2020 general election. Approved a work authorization with Goodwin Mills and K. Wood for the purposes of hiring Taffy Pippin Consulting in the amount of $7,700 to prepare an updated disadvantaged business enterprise plan for the Macon downtown airport. We approved an agreement with the FHA in the amount of $241,188 for the runway rehabilitation project at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport. And we approved a fund balance for the restoration of the Benny A. Scott Memorial steam engine in the amount of $50,000. We approved a transfer in parts and beautifications line item in the amount of $40,000 for the rental of Street Sweeper. And approved five-year short-term work program and capital improvements element budget. And finally, a contract with Warren and Associates in the amount of $509,500 was approved for phase three of the Freedom Park renovations payable from the squash fund. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next is Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas.
Okay, thank you. The members of the Economic and Community Development Committee are Lucas Schlesinger, Watkins, Bivens, and Shepherd. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on August 25th, 2020, and we took the following actions. The committee approved the following appointments. Gregory C. Glover to the Arbor Conservation Board. And the committee approved naming the engineering building as the Robert E. Fountain Engineering Building. This concludes the report of our committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Every day, every day in the Middle Georgia is Public Safety Appreciation Day, but I understand that there's no report from the Public Safety Committee at this point.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. I always thank you for your comment because I always want to make that.
Well, I will, I will make one of these comments. We had a very successful nine eleven ceremony last Friday. Well, well-attended and always a moving event, stirring event, and I was privileged to be there and attend. So we do thank, we remember nine eleven and what happened in New York, but it's also a time we express appreciation for our local public safety officials that help us each and every day. Facilities and Engineering did meet. That report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones? You got, you're still muted, I'm afraid, Chairman Jones.
He did, okay. All right, we did meet on September the 8th. We approved the following streetlight installation of six streetlights in Lake Arrowhead subdivision. Installation of one streetlight on Riverdale Road. Same procedure applies. They covered the installation and then Bibb County covers the, or the lighting itself. Number two item, the committee approved the exercise of eminent domain for four properties located on Persley Street. The committee also approved the quick claim deed for 0.02 acres located at 1720 Danenburg to Mercy University for $800. The committee approved setting a new speed limit on Foster Road from Tucker Road to Zebulon Road, reducing it from 45 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. The committee approved the temporary expansion of the use of county right-of-way for the sale of goods. Okay, finally, the committee approved the authorizing the Macon Water Authority to spend up to $100,000 from the landfill closure slash levy maintenance fund for the purpose of improving the Georgia Central Railroad grade crossing on Lower Poplar Street so as to provide heavy equipment access for the repair and maintenance of the levy. As you explained to us, Mayor, that those funds are provided by the Macon Water Authority. They're set aside for doing projects just similar to this. That completes the report of Facilities and Engineering.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. I understand there are no public comments that have been received for agenda item purposes. So we'll move on then. The only item that was on the consent agenda was tabled at pre-commission. So no action taken on that item at this point. That then takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is old business. And the first item of old business is an ordinance to amend our alcohol licensing services sections of the code. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend various sections of chapter four, seven, and 26 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances to reflect procedural changes related to the transfer of alcohol licensing services to the Macon Bibb County Tax Commissioner's Office and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to transfer money in the tax commissioner's office budget. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the tax commissioner's office budget by transferring $1,400 from the salaries and wages part-time line item to the contract labor contractual services line item to provide for costs associated with the use of a temporary employee and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Is this change similar to what we did in the Superior Court Clerk's Office? That basically the same?
Similar, right, but this is another constitutional officer of the tax commissioner. And he is moving money from salaries and wages part-time to contract labor item, which I guess is a separate bucket in his budget. So again...
Okay, I just wondered. There was a lot of discussion on the others. I haven't heard a whole lot of discussion on this one, but I'm for it.
Good, good. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to amend the code relating to the referral of items of commission business to the Committee of the Whole. This was sponsored by Commissioner Bivens, and basically, in essence, says you can't refer, the mayor can't refer anything to the Committee of the Whole without five members voting. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend section 2-37 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances related to the referral of items of commission business to the Committee of the Whole and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? I wanted to make a point that I thought about after. This was a five to four vote coming out of the Committee of the Whole. There was good conversation about it, but one additional thought that I had, the only time that the mayor pro tem has a vote other than at full commission meetings is when we meet as a Committee of the Whole. That's the only time that the mayor pro tem, because he does not serve, mayor pro tem does not serve as a member of any standing committee other than the committee on committees. So this actually would mean that Commissioner Tillman couldn't vote, or the mayor pro tem couldn't vote unless we were meeting in a Committee of the Whole. So that, along with the other points that I tried to make, I hope will carry the day. But is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify. Let me get a roll call vote, because I'm not going to be able to tell, I don't believe. Give me a roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, if you will unmute, and we'll vote by districts. Commissioner Nguyen, how do you vote? Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Five to four, the ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Item D then is an appointment to the Arbor Conservation Board. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Gregory C. Glover to the Arbor Conservation Board and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have to say that Mr. Glover is one of the most enthusiastic appointments that you have sent to us. I talked with him, he was so excited about serving. He is a retired county extension agent, and was highly recommended by one of our own local ones, Royce James, and just is very, very excited to serve. And the board is already making overtures to him to get him acclimated if we approve them.
Good, thank you very much. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item E, which is to rename the engineering building. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the County of Macon Bibb, Georgia to name the Macon Bibb County Engineering Building as the Robert E. Fountain Engineering Building in honor of Robert E. Fountain's contributions to his community and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item F is a resolution for some streetlights in the Lake Arrowhead, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving a request for the installation of six streetlights in Lake Arrowhead subdivision pursuant to article 10 of chapter 29 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances to be paid from the facilities management budget, services to government, electricity line item, and for other lawful purposes.
Now, the Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, I got to say something about this. The folks in that area say thank you, thank you, thank you for entertaining this. It is very dark and there are lots of curves in the Lake Arrowhead area. And so the neighborhood association has asked for these over the years, and they are just elated that we are undertaking this, and they ask for our unanimous approval to increase the safety in that area.
Good, is there further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
You all just showed my former house. I lived at 2016 Fairway Drive while attending J. Elwood Hall, who Commissioner Lucas's stepson was my best friend, Little Gene. And so interesting that y'all are doing this in the Lake Area, our old neighborhood, and I look forward to seeing those streetlights.
Now you can.
Very good, is there further discussion?
We call him Little Gene, but he's actually David Lucas Jr.
Very good, very good. Glad to have that bit of information. Is there further discussion about the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a similar resolution about a streetlight on Riverdale Road. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving a request for the installation of one streetlight at 400 Riverdale Road pursuant to article 10 of chapter 29 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances to be paid from the facilities management budget, service to government, electricity line item, and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Where is Riverdale Road? I just know Macon has a Riverdale Road.
Yeah.
I was familiar with Riverdale Road in Atlanta, so we have a Riverdale Road.
Riverdale Road is in Riverside Park off of Pierce Avenue exit on the other side of the interstate, 20 interstate and the river.
One in Ingleside.
There is one on Ingleside, yeah.
There's a Riverdale Road in Ingleside, close to you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm wrong. I thought it was Riverdale Road over in Riverside Park, but I guess I should have just left it alone. I don't know where Riverdale Road is.
It's off of Overlook, Mr. Mayor.
Right off of Overlook Avenue, Overlook Drive.
I used to live over there, so I know where it was over there.
Okay, well, good. This is 400 Riverdale. You said that's Riverdale Drive? This is Riverdale Road.
Riverdale Road.
I don't know, but that's where it is.
It runs right.
That's where it is. And the Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the streetlight signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. Ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Item H, and I may get a motion to do the next four items together because they are four separate exercises of eminent domain all along Persley Street to facilitate this streetscape project. But I'll ask the clerk to read the first one to condemn 209 Persley Street.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 209 Persley Street located in Macon, Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item I, similar resolution for 201 Persley Street. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 201 Persley Street located in Macon, Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Third in this series is an eminent domain to acquire 183 Persley Street. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 183 Persley Street located in Macon, Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? I'm glad we did these one at a time because we get to look at the pictures. Okay, no further discussion. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Fourth and final is 195 Persley Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 195 Persley Street located in Macon, Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Next is the conveyance of two one-hundredths of an acre located on Danenburg Avenue to Mercy, the Corporation of Mercy University. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of property to the Corporation of Mercy University tolling 0.02 acres located at 1720 Danenburg Avenue for its appraised value of $800 and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is item M, which is to revise the speed limit and reduce the speed limit on Foster Road, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission amending a portion of section 28-19 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances to set the maximum speed limit for Foster Road from Tucker Road to Zebulon Road at 35 miles per hour and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lucas, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had pedestrian safety review board meeting this morning, and we had, as you know, that board is made up of representation from a lot of different areas, including engineering. And what the request that came from the board is that whenever there's a request for lowering the speed, if it can come through the pedestrian safety review board so that we make sure that engineering has a chance to do, if it's speed studies or other kinds of things, because we understand that there are a number of hazardous situations in that area that need to be dealt with. And engineering, they just want to be a part of the process. So that was the discussion. They don't want to hold it up. They're all in favor of Commissioner Jones's ordinance here, but they just wanted to make sure that every department that had anything to do with that, that they were a part of the approval process. So the only thing they're asking is before this is, we can act on it, but before you change the signs and all of that stuff, it's engineering to kind of take a look at it and make sure everything is done that needs to be done. If the sponsor doesn't have any problem with that.
Let me call on Michael. I think Michael may have some information on this that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mayor. So under state law, before we change a speed limit on a road, we have to have an engineering study done. And in this case, Nigel Floyd, our traffic engineer, emailed me and said that he had been looking at this road for some time and that he agreed that there was a need to reduce the speed out there. And so I don't know if he was the one that was at the PSRB meeting this morning or if it was someone else from engineering, but this has been cleared through engineering.
Okay, he was not there this morning, so he couldn't say. But there were questions as to whether it had been cleared.
Yes, ma'am.
By everybody, so that information can be shared. We just wanted to make sure. We got the biggest bang for the buck. If we were looking at an area, we wanted to make sure that, you know, it's pedestrian safety after we did whatever it is we needed to do.
Very good, very good. All right, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to temporarily allow for the expanded use of county right-of-way for the sale of goods. This is sponsored by Mayor Pro Tem Tillman, and I'll ask the clerk to read this by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to temporarily allow for the expanded use of county right-of-way for the sale of goods and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Nguyen?
I've got Commissioner Jones, I've got Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Nguyen, and I think I have Mayor Pro Tem Tillman. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. I just want to, addressing you, Mr. Mayor, the CEO, chairman of the commission, in the spirit of cooperation and just to show my friend, my Democrat friend, Mr. Al Tillman.
We're nonpartisan. We're nonpartisan there.
We talk about it on a national level, so. From the other side of the aisle, let's put it that way, from the other side of the aisle that I'm going to vote for this, and I want him to know that.
Oh, very good. All right, is there further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Nguyen.
Commissioner Nguyen, you going to top that?
Well, no, actually, he stoned my thunder because I was going to say I was in support of this. I understand the reasoning behind Mayor Pro Tem wanting to have this resolution to assist people in making some money during the COVID-19. I do have a little bit of a concern about the public safety aspect of it, so I hope that won't be a problem. And I want to make sure that the people that do sell do it by the rules that we're setting out for them so that they don't get in trouble doing it. But I am in favor of this, Mayor Pro Tem.
Very good, very good. Mayor Pro Tem, you got anything you want to add?
Yes, sir.
Say thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Y'all give people the impression like we don't really vote 95% of the time together, and I appreciate it. Thank y'all. But the whole idea behind this and for commissioners is how do we continue to support entrepreneurship? Overall, I'm an advocate of entrepreneurship primarily during COVID-19. I would even ask businesses such as Newtown Macon, Neighborhood Watch Associations, and whether it's the Opportunity Zone or what have you, to probably begin to establish locations that we can have entrepreneurs work and operate in. I think, Mr. Mayor, at some point, we want to get an update on you bringing back the flea market or the farmer's markets back downtown Macon. Downtown, that would certainly help. Downtown, that will certainly help. Rumor has it, the farmer's market on Eisenhower and Commissioner Watkins District will soon close, and for many, many years, families and folks have attended their flea market. And so, places like that, a location downtown will give folks that sell food and vegetables the opportunity to all be in one centralized location. And I'm going to ask Newtown, if they'll work with their downtown organization, to even look further at establishing a particular location where vendors can set up like they do up near the Old Five Point in Atlanta and some streets around that particular area. Because although this is temporary, maybe this will give us an opportunity in 2021 to begin to look at more opportunities to actually have people in a generalized location that they can come and sell products and be successful, because COVID-19 is going to knock out so many businesses and a lot of the stimulus money that's coming down that have served, helped many folks. It has just not been enough. And so, on a local level, just what can we do? And this is just the start of something, hopefully, to do to further help entrepreneurship. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose say no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item O, which is a resolution to use money from the Water Authority account for landfill closure and levy maintenance to improve a grade crossing on Lower Poplar Street. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Biv County Commission authorizing the Macon Water Authority to spend up to $175,000 from the landfill closure levy maintenance fund for the purpose of improving the Georgia Central Railroad grade crossing on Lower Poplar Street so as to provide heavy equipment access for the repair and maintenance levy and for other lawful purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval, and Committee of the Whole recommends the approval of the resolution as amended to increase it to $175,000. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution as amended signify by saying aye. Oppose say no. The ayes have it, the resolution as amended is adopted. Next is an ordinance to authorize a supplemental budget appropriation from fund balance for the Board of Elections in this crazy election year, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Biv County Commission to authorize a supplemental budget appropriation from fund balance to the Macon Biv County Board of Election in the amount of $427,251 in order to provide for various costs related to the conduct of the 2020 general election and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. The Committee of the Whole recommends approval of the committee amendment to increase the amount to $427,251. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, sir. I do want to make a comment that I know we had the Board of Elections Chairman here, Mike Catherine, earlier at our earlier meeting, and I think that the reason people need to know what we're spending this extra money on, and it's going to be for additional early voting spots around Macon, maybe three or four more, and then some drop boxes for the absentee ballots and things like that. So I think that this is an important, and this is a big election, and it even would cover anything for additional costs for runoff that may occur. So I think this money is appropriate that we approve.
Very good. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Allen.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a lot of concern about this earlier. I still do have concern about it. The vote on Sunday, I will be voting no, but only because of the vote on Sunday. If they change that, I'd be happy as a jaybird.
Very good. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no?
No.
Got one no, Commissioner Allen, so we'll move on. Item Q was tabled at pre-commission to give time for the attorneys to perfect that and maybe improve it. So that moves us to item R, which is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a non-federal reimbursable agreement with the FAA for improvements at Middle Georgia Regional Airport, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Biv County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a non-federal reimbursable agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $241,188.24 to be paid from the Middle Georgia Regional Airport 1432 Runway Rehabilitation Project Budget for the purpose of installing runway navigational aids and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item S, then, is an ordinance to appropriate up to $50,000 to refurbish the locomotive at the front of Carolyn Creighton Park, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Biv County Commission to authorize the Macon Biv County Government to appropriate up to $50,000 from fund balance for the purpose of providing for the restoration and repainting of the Benny A. Scott Memorial Steam Engine located at the entrance of Carolyn Creighton Park to authorize the hiring of a suitable contractor on a professional service basis and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Wynn, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Again, I want to make sure the public understand we're not restoring it for use. We're only restoring it so that it will look nicer as an entrance to Carolyn Creighton Park. This steam engine has been around since I was a little girl, had my pictures made in front of it or around it many times, and I think it's a nice entrance piece to our Carolyn Creighton Park, and people still would love to see it, I think, in better condition. So I think spending, I hope it won't cost more than $50,000. We are spending up to $50,000, but I hope this will be something that we'll keep in our community as a historic point for people to look at.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is an ordinance to amend the parks and beautification budget by transferring money between line items, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Biv County Commission to amend the parks and beautification budget by transferring $40,000 from the contract labor contractual service line item to the rentals, equipment, and vehicle line item to provide for the rental of street sweepers and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to adopt a five-year short-term work program for capital improvements, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Biv County Commission approving and adopting the Macon Biv County Five Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvements Element Update and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That takes us to item V, which is a professional services contract in the amount of $556,000 for improvements at the Macon Coliseum for the ICE dasher system, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Biv County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service contract with the.
I think it's Athletica.
Athletica Sports Systems Incorporated in the amount of $556,900 for Macon Coliseum ICE dasher system to be paid from the 2018 SPOSS Fund Cultural and Public Coliseum Line Item and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I had, yeah, I had questions about the dashers, and I was wondering whether the hockey team was the only entity that was using it. I did get some information from, I believe it was Julie Moore during the week, and she listed a number of uses that we're making, including increasing safety, which to me was real important, and then the use during the public ice skating. There are several other uses that we're making of those dashers in addition to those things being there for the ice hockey team. So I felt a whole lot better about that expenditure of a half million.
Mr. Mayor, just one follow-up too, please. The ice dashers, I didn't know what they were, and I think that we probably need to let the public know what they're voting, what we're voting on, and that's the, is that, what kind of, I don't know what it's made of. It's not glass, but fiberglass surrounding.
Plexiglass.
Plexiglass around the rink so that when a puck is hit, it doesn't get hit into the audience and that kind of thing.
Very good. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve Phase Three improvements to Freedom Park, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Biv County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between Macon Biv County and Warren Associates Incorporated in the amount of $509,500 for Phase Three of the Freedom Park renovation to be paid from 2018 SPOSS revenues, Parks and Recreation, Freedom Park Line Item, and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. The Committee of the Whole recommends the improvements to specify where the funds are coming from, the SPOSS funds are coming from. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The ayes have it, and the resolution as amended is adopted. Next is item X, which is a resolution directed to the GBI about the Macon Medical Examiner's Office. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Biv County Commission requesting the Georgia Bureau of Investigation and local legislative delegation to take action to ensure the continued operation of the Macon Medical Examiner's Office, authorizing the administration to send a letter regarding the same and for other lawful purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I think we've just done letters of support in the past. I don't know why we had to do a formal, a formal resolution. I would have liked to have seen the corner bring a list of municipalities, and we show that we're all supporting it, such as resolutions like we've done with certain ordinance versus marijuana and so forth. I just don't think, know how we can supersede a area or department like this when you have your state legislators who ultimately decide on state's budget. And so, I think we support our corner, and of course, we, if it was any one of us, we just want to know how loved ones died, if there's some controversy behind it. And this is nothing new that the GBI has done by moving things. So I just don't know the impact. Of course, it's not going to cost us anything, but I just don't understand why we had to do this in a formal resolution. And because it does, like one of Commissioners said earlier, it's basically recommending, we can't tell them anything to do, and I don't think this has ever come up when you're talking about acquiring with the GBI. And I think, correct, I think I said the GBI. Thank you.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah, I, well, Mr. Mayor, I know I've got to address my comments to you, but I think this is one of those issues where that medical lab performs so many services for this area, and Macon is a hub, and a lot of other areas depend on that, and this is going to be with, if the imminent closure is going to be such an imposition on so many, not just on the solving of crimes here, but in surrounding areas as well. And other municipalities are expressing their concern over it. Over in Milledgeville, Baldwin County, they are introducing a resolution asking their legislators and others to work on trying to keep that in place here in Macon. And also over in Tomsboro, the mayor over there is asking her council to pass a resolution, and there may be others. So I think this is important enough. It does not make sense for a city like Macon, Georgia not to have that service provided here in this community. And I think if we work hard enough and we make our own personal contacts with our legislators, if we can't get it to say open fully, at least we could ensure that we get someone driving here to provide those services three days a week. And so, we need to get something. We do not need to let that facility close.
And just as a follow-up, if I may.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, just as a follow-up. I think we'll have support coming out of this commission. I think what you're going to see, because I did make a call, I think you're going to see them come back and ask for some type of funding from municipalities, and I would like to have seen that done right now by the corner to say, what is it that we can do as a local municipality to help? And that wasn't done. But I mean, if it's unanimous support that I think the commission desires that we have, then I don't have a problem. I just still think it's going to come back and ultimately, they're going to come back asking for funding or see it as a directive from our municipality. And so, I don't have an issue in supporting it and giving it full unanimous support. So we are all on same page around our local region.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Again, if you want to sign this, please come by the clerk's office tomorrow and sign it. Otherwise, there was no dissenting vote, and I assume that everybody would authorize the clerk to sign their name to it without further action on your part. But if that's not the case, please contact the clerk's office. If you want to sign it yourself personally, call and come by and sign it. We added one item to our agenda tonight, and that is item Y on a resolution of support for the Macon Biv County Board of Elections, providing additional voting locations and early voting, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Biv County Commission in support of the Macon Biv County Board of Elections, identifying new satellite voting locations, adding new absentee ballot drop box locations, and approving early and advanced voting on Sunday, October 25, 2020, for the November 3, 2020 general and special election and for other purposes.
The Committee of the Whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I am fully in favor. Well, we voted earlier to fund some of these things. I'm fully in favor of the early voting days. I don't know if it's 21 or 17, it's mentioned both times. Then we have, I'm fully in favor of additional sites for early voting and the drop boxes for absentee ballots to be dropped in. We have, what, 17 or 21 days ahead of the election to vote. We have a Saturday vote, so we have absentee ballots you can apply for right now. Everybody in this community that's a registered voter that wants to vote can vote from anywhere in this community, in their home. Just pick up the phone and call. If you say you don't have a phone, ask a relative or a friend to let you borrow their phone to make a call to get an absentee ballot. If you need a stamp, let me know. But I just don't see that extra day, that extra Sunday vote being necessary. But I, I just don't see that extra day, that extra Sunday vote being necessary. And I, that, for that one reason, I'm not in support of this resolution. Otherwise, I think everything that we want to do here is, is, is favorable.
Is there further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lucas?
I would just like to ask, uh, this commission to support this resolution, uh, because it says to the community that we feel like the, uh, the, uh, elections are important. And of course, we say that, but we can show it. We've already shown it by approving a funding for the additional machinery and other kinds of things. And the Board of Elections members have been working very, very hard to catch up. The, we in Macon Bibb County are behind. We are way behind. As a matter of fact, some of the folks who are on the Board of Elections have gone to meetings and the other counties are talking about all of the satellite, uh, locations that they have and all the other things that they're doing. And then our Board of Elections members, the ones that I've talked to, they say, well, you know, I feel just really, really bad about our situation, having just the one, the one location with over a hundred thousand registered voters. I think the number is a hundred five thousand registered voters. And of course, with the upcoming elections, uh, we're going to have, there's a lot of interest brewing in those elections. And I think every opportunity we need to give to citizens. And let me say in closing that I appreciate the support of the Georgia Women, the local organization that, uh, is a very progressive organization. I think all of you have received, uh, emails expressing their support for, uh, for this resolution and for the new and improved Macon Bibb, uh, Board of Elections. Um, I don't know whether you know it or not, but Macon Bibb is part of, we've been sued. We are part of the, uh, statewide lawsuit, uh, claiming that there's not enough that's being done for our voters. So you may think that we're doing something, but you look around us, Houston County has had three satellite voting places for years and years and years. And we're over here bragging because we've got one and we had one, another one for half a year. Uh, we don't have anything to brag about. So, uh, voting should be made as accessible and as easy as possible. It's not how, what we think about it. It's not what we can personally do. It's just that we make it accessible and open as possible to all of our citizens. And this just expresses that we support, uh, Board of Elections in what they're doing to increase the ease of voting in Macon Bibb County and come into this century. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Allen?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, again, I will vote no. I still think it's wrong for us to be voting on Sunday. I admit, that's, you know, we got all the time in the world to go vote. If we need some more satellite places, I am all for it. Put one over toward Ms. Lucas's office if we want to, at school. But voting on Sunday is wrong.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Uh, there was an earlier, uh, request for a roll call vote.
Oh, for a roll call vote, yes, sir.
All right. Got, got, got a roll call vote, uh, request, uh, it, without further discussion, I'll ask clerk to call the roll. Uh, be sure and unmute yourself and give us a, a verbal, uh, vote. If you're in favor of the, the resolution, you'd vote yes. If you're opposed to it, you'd vote no.
We'll be voting by districts. Commissioner Wayne, how do you vote?
Only because of Sunday voting, vote no.
Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote? Uh, Commissioner Jones? He appears to have left the meeting.
He votes yes.
Commissioner Bivens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman, how do you vote?
Yes.
It's five to three, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, the, the ayes have it, uh, and the resolution is adopted. Um, that is the end of, of old business. Uh, we have several items of new business that have already come down from the, um, legal department, attorney's office. And, uh, I want to take a point of personal privilege at this point and just say thank you to the county attorney and first assistant county attorney and all of the other assistant attorneys, uh, up there. They do a wonderful job of dealing with this volume of work, and I appreciate it. These have come down thus far, and there may be some additional ones to come down. So as always, please be sure and check the agenda that'll come out Friday afternoon. Uh, and we'll be talking about these in committee meetings, uh, beginning by Zoom, uh, next Tuesday at nine o'clock. Those, uh, items of new business that have come down thus far, uh, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Preston Geotechnical Consultants, LLC in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars for testing of construction materials and soil, uh, at the Lake Tobysavki Ranger Station to be paid from the two thousand and eighteen SPOSS Funds Recreation Lake Tobysavki Property Line Item. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Um, item B, uh, is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services, uh, agreement with Hughes, uh, Good, O'Leary and Ron Incorporated, uh, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars to provide master planning services for mid-city square projects, uh, or for mid cities, for the mid-city square project to be paid, uh, from the Second Street Allocation Funds. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. Uh, item C is a resolution appointing Scarlet Farr, uh, to, to keep Macon Be a Beautiful, uh, Board. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item D, uh, is a resolution appointing Weston Hamilton Stroud to the Central Georgia Joint Development Authority. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item E is a resolution to appoint Waldron, uh, A. Hilli Senior, uh, to the Board of Trustees of the Macon Bibb County Community Enhancement Authority. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item F is a resolution in, oops, no, uh, item F was moved to, to old business and we just got through voting, uh, on that. Uh, so that's all of the new businesses come down thus far. Again, check your agendas, uh, on Friday afternoon for all of the resolutions and ordinances that, that may, additional ordinances and resolutions that may come down.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Let me, let me be sure that there are no, there are no, uh, pub, uh, public comments on non-agenda items that, that were received. Okay? So now, now we're at the point of, uh, personal privilege and Commissioner Allen, got you, sir.
You know, Mr. Mayor, we've been working extremely hard on all these projects through this year. We're spending a lot of taxpayers' dollars, but I have not heard one thing about where we are on the salaries and the bringing our employees up and to where they need to be on the salaries. I know we do have, because we got it from Athens Clark County, the salary survey. I know the committee has looked at it, but nobody has said one word that I know, hadn't said anything to me or anybody else. I'm getting calls on it and we're losing, we're still losing employees and we're losing directors. We need to either talk to our employees or talk to our directors and let them know what's going on. We can't just keep, just spinning the wheel. We've got to do something, Mr. Mayor.
Right. We, we, we certainly are in the process. Don't, don't need to, you know, intrude on your point of personal privilege, but we're working on that and should have something very, very shortly, uh, as it's being finalized for, for presentation. So you should have something very shortly, and you can tell the employees that we're working hard on it, uh, and hope to, to have it and implement it, uh, by January the first or effective January the first.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes, sir. Commissioner Bivens, point of personal privilege for you, sir?
Yes, sir. I, I, I made a request to have a discussion on the board regarding a, a letter that I hope all the commissioners got, um, you know, just a discussion with what that letter contains. And I was hoping it could be put on an agenda or something.
Uh, this, this may, uh, uh, are you talking about the letter of, of, the, the lady that wanted the taxes waived, uh?
Yeah, 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 that one.
Um, I, I'm sure that, uh, Chairman Watkins can, you know, discuss this in, in, uh, Operations and Finance if he so chooses.
He said he was going to add it to his agenda, I think.
Oh, good. There you go. So, so Chairman Watkins will add it to Operations and Finance.
Yeah, like I said, I would have did it last week, but I got an email that said it was going to be in, uh, full commission. But like I say, I have, I have no problem with discussing. I think it's something we've been needing to discuss anyway.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other points of personal privilege? Uh, hearing none, we've reached the end of our agenda. No further points of personal privilege. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And without objection, we are adjourned.